You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 25th meeting of the LaPorte County Council. You can find information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's LaPorte County Council regular meeting of April 25th, 2022. If you haven't silenced your phone, please do so now. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounds better when there's a lot of people here, you know that? Roll call, Mr. Auditor.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Councilman Yagowski.
Present.
Councilman Garner.
Present.
And Councilwoman Graham Rosso.
Present.
All seven are here.
Thank you. Approval of the April 25th, 2022 agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it with one adjustment. Under our new business, item one, we'd like to add the letter D, the LaPorte County Health Department Nurse.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenauer. Any other questions or comments or additions? If you're in no and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the March 28th, 2022 minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Ms. Graham Rosso. Any other questions or comments? If you're in none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next item is public comment. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? There's a three-minute time. If you've spoken before on a topic, we ask that you be very brief. If you've already spoken on that, especially if you're here for the lit, if you haven't spoken, then you're free to speak. But this is the time to speak during this meeting, so. Please state your name and.
This is Tommy Kalovic from 1316 Ohio Street in Michigan City. If this lit text is passed, all I'm going to ask for, I'm going to ask, I'm a Michigan City man, I feel that we already provide abundantly for both the police and fire. We have $30 million police headquarters, we got a pair of million-dollar fire trucks, we just approved new roofs on two of the fire stations. What I'm going to ask is for just increased service and improved service for both the fire and police. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Don't be afraid to run up there.
Yeah. Michael Vincent, 6 Devonshire Court, Michigan City. Professional sports is a billion-dollar industry. They protect their valuable assets from injury and breakdown with load management or what's called pitch counts. LaPorte County has a valuable asset as well. This needs to be protected. It's called the Franklin Street Bridge. This is the most direct route to our lakefront. With consideration of the events we have coming up this summer, it will be the only route to the lakefront. What I'm speaking about is the Great Lakes Boat Race, and we can't take those boats around the detour. What I'm proposing and asking the council to do is to limit the raises or put the bridge on a pitch count to no more than 10 times a day to limit our risk and breakdowns.
Just so, you need to go to the commissioner. The commissioners are the ones that control the operation of the bridge.
Do you speak to the commissioners?
I'll pass your message on.
Okay.
But they're the ones, if you want to send that email to them also.
I just see it on the agenda, we have funding for the Franklin Street Bridge on the agenda tonight, so somehow you can communicate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael, for speaking. I'll follow up with that. Mr. Vincent, the other issue is that's a federal waterway. It's not like the commissioners or the city of Michigan City can control that bridge. I mean, it's not that it can't be done, but you'd have to go through the federal government. I agree with you 100%. It doesn't need to go up every half hour. So, we've been discussing that as well, and I spoke with the Coast Guard a year ago, and they said they thought there were probably only six or seven times a day, even on busy days, that the boats were big enough to require the bridge to raise.
Right.
Most of the boats could actually go through by lowering an antenna. Instead of lowering their antenna, we raised the bridge and stopped traffic for 50 cars. Makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Yagowski?
I'll go through that with the commissioners.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, this is Joel Wilson. I'm from 8181 West Applewood. Two things. One, I noticed in the new business that you're downgrading a nurse position for the Health Department to a CMA. I noticed that you're changing a nurse position at the Health Department to a CMA. The nurse typically has much more, well, will have much more education as well as assessment skills. I would like you to speak about that or talk about that when you cover that section, especially since we're raising taxes. That's really concerning our folks with the greatest need, are going to get much less service. It's really an important factor. And then, since we're discussing taxes, I'm sure it's been brought up many times before, but this is the first I found about this. It's a really big thing for us to raise our taxes by over 50% in LaPorte County. That's going to be hugely impactful, not in the short term, but in the long run, as people choose to move in and industry chooses to move in. Please, please think about that, because it will have a long-term impact about our income in the county. And for the short term, yes, the police will get more money, and they need support. But long-term, we're going to undercut ourselves. It's really important that we step up and figure out how we're going to keep the county growing, not just raising short-term fixes. Thank you very much.
I agree with you completely. Thank you. Anybody else? State your name, ma'am. Oh, she's not. What was the point? Just so you know, Don, Don, I mean Paul, sorry.
Thank you.
The rule's three minutes. If you've already spoke on a subject, we need you to be brief.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Mr. President, you said something last week under your com, or last meeting under your comments about you took my vote as being, or my opinion as a no vote. Yeah, it is a no vote, and I would have been advocating not to vote for that tax for Michigan City, over Michigan City, because I believe that we have been managing our money well over there, and giving our police and fire and the city workers very good packages. So, with that, did you ever stop to think that who's going to be greatly impacted by this? It's, I'm going to use a round number, it's like 37% of the population of Michigan City are in a poverty level. Not only that, you're going to be taking, you already are taking 13, how many million you're taking out of the disposable income in the economy of LaPorte County? So now you're going to be taking an additional 1% at 6.5, 6.3 out of disposable income.
Your numbers are, I don't know what you're talking about, Paul. Your numbers are not correct.
At the 1% level, or the 9.5, 9.7.
9.5 it currently is. Point 9.
Point 9.5. You're taking money out of the disposable income out of the LaPorte County's economic engine. So with this additional fund, funding that you want, or that people want, is going to be taking more money out of the economic engine of LaPorte County. And at this time, I think is a very bad time, because I know where I'm employed is that our CPI has kicked in because of the level of inflation. It's, I just think it's a bad, bad time to do this, and I think that a lot of people are already hurting, and they're going to be hurting even more. So, I am an advocate against this, and, but the last time that we were talking about this 13 years ago, that was referenced last time, had nothing to do with this particular issue. It had, it talked about increasing the county income tax in, at a whole, not specifically a tax for security or police.
Public safety.
And public safety. So, if you want to, if you want to pass something, does it have to be at the increment that you're looking at right now, or can it be reduced? Because I know that Mayor Dermody at one meeting said, "We were advised to go and get all that we can get at one, at one time."
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
I'd like to respond to that, because I was at the Michigan City meeting, and one of the Michigan City councilmen literally asked Mr. Dermody, "Are you sure 0.5 is enough?" And he indicated that he thought it was sufficient at this time. It wasn't that he was going to ask for as much as he could get.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any other public comments? Anybody else from the public like to speak? Anybody else from the public that would like to, anybody on Zoom?
Okay. Randy, I'd like to speak now rather than going during department head reports.
Three minutes. Just like.
Since some of my comments reflect, Tim Stamos, auditor of LaPorte County, since some of my comments represent personal comments, and some of them represents auditor comments, I'm going during public comment. I first brought this up to you because it was my moral and fiduciary responsibility to give you options for funding the LaPorte County government. I have concerns on why this is a done deal, which I spoke about at your prior meeting. There are six forms of total, different forms of lit under Indiana code that can be charged for all kinds of different functions and purposes. One of them is a jail lit. You could charge up to 0.20% to fund a jail. We've talked about $80 million to fund a jail. Maybe part of that 0.50% should be 0.20 to fund a jail, because the money collected that, from that, over a period of time, would fund the lion's share of a jail. The financial advisor was a financial advisor to the city of LaPorte, not the county. As the CFO of LaPorte County, I would advise you to hire your own financial, respectfully to hire your own financial advisor, and evaluate this independently and substantively. Do the salary and the efficiency studies, determine the need before you set the tax. Consider phasing in the tax, over 50% increase is a sizable increase, maybe a quarter percent. If the council seems like it wants to do 0.50%, do the quarter percent the first year, another quarter percent the second year to spread the pain. So, those are, those are my thoughts, and I still would like to see the council as looking after the interest, as the county auditor, with your own financial advisor, evaluating this in a much broader context, where you've got five different or six different ways that you could charge this, rather than just seemingly, to me, going with the options presented by the city of LaPorte and its financial advisor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Briefly, Tom Dermody, mayor of the city of LaPorte, and I know this is a difficult time when you can't get property tax bills out correctly, and we've seen that, and Faker Tilly has done many of these lits across the counties to help public safety. And number one, if you pass the 0.50, you can use portions of those dollar or those percents to fund a jail. Warwick County is doing it currently and planning on doing that. So, I think the biggest point is, and we've heard discussion of ARP money, let's use the ARP money. That's, that's going to help keep police and fire here today, next year, and the year after. Well, I can tell you this, there is no security in ARP funds, because it's not sustainable. We are short officers, roughly, I think Sheriff Boyd has discussed, almost 17 officers short for the county by federal standards. We're short, close to 10. I think Michigan City is short, close to 10, and to respond to Mr. Chris Walinski, they have now raised salaries closer to LaPorte. It does not take effect, or ineffective of how many officers they're short. And I'll leave you with, now is the perfect time, because our police and our public safety have options. And what they face on a daily basis is a different world than many years ago. Let's not wait for a tragedy, let's not wait for further officers to leave now, give them the security, and I certainly appreciate the council's consideration, because anybody that doesn't want to support the tax has not come out and said, "I know you're short. When I call 911, I'm going to be okay if you're two or three or four hours late, because you're already doing other things and taking on other calls." People still expect to see police, fire, 911 there when they call. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Public comment is now closed. Moving on to department head reports. Any department heads? Well, well, stay there. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening. Lynn Swanson, County Coroner. I haven't been in for a while, so I thought I'd drop in and let you know what's going on at the coroner's office. I've been asked a lot lately about overdose deaths, and of course, you know, they're on the rise. Last year, we had a total of 56 overdose deaths. This year already, we have 12. I have, I believe, seven toxicology reports outstanding yet, that I, we haven't been able to determine cause of death, so that would make that number to almost 20. So far this year, there've been 85 deaths that we have responded to, two for asphyxiation, one choking, three motor vehicle accidents, 12 overdoses, two suicides, 63 naturals, and 10 doctor signs. When I say doctor signs, I mean, that means we show up at the scene, because they've died at home, and that we've contacted their primary care physician. He says, "I'll sign it." We still have to fill out burial transits and wait for the funeral home to come to retrieve the body. Our total for last year on calls was 417, so it looks like we're probably going to go over that for this coming year, you know, unless things slow down. But with the overdose deaths, you know, we've, I don't even know where to begin with this. The majority of the overdose deaths were coming from Michigan City last year. They're still in first place for this year, which is not a good place to be, but that's where they are. On a lighter note, I'm sending four deputies to recertification training in June. They have to recertify and get their hours, and I have two candidates interested in going down to class in September. So, we'll see how we can get them moving.
Thank you. And has there been any discussion, and I was looking for the prosecutor, I think he might be on Zoom though, has there been any more talk about reclassifying an overdose if it's laced with fentanyl? And since technically, to my perspective is, they never intended to take fentanyl. They intended to, not everybody that does drugs or takes drugs intends to overdose. Some of them are poisoned by the fentanyl.
Well, the state of Indiana classifies a drug overdose as an accidental death. I don't know why, because those people know the risk when they're doing it.
I get that, but.
But as far as just the fentanyl, I would say at this point, 98% of the cases we see for drug overdoses, there's fentanyl involved. They're cutting it into everything. They're cutting it into pills, they're, you know, putting it in marijuana, it's going in methamphetamines. So, as far as I, you know, as far as I know, there's been no discussion to classify it differently, because we're seeing it in almost every case.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next department head? Or elected official?
Can you do it with me or no?
State your name, please.
I'm Joey Wensky. I'm the treasurer of LaPorte County, and I'm here to.
State your name, sir, in case we forgot who you were. With Tim Staples.
Mike Schultz would have been here, but he had another meeting, so. I sent you all a packet that I presented at the commissioners' meeting last Wednesday with my, the, my other two colleagues and financial team members on the.
That was in an email, wasn't it?
Yes, and I hope everybody got one.
You sent it, right. You sent an email.
I sent it to your county.
Today?
No, I sent it last Thursday. So, if you'd like me to read everything again, I'll be happy to do that, or just answer questions. I do want to update you that we did hear from the DLGF, and we got our timeline. However, we have not received any files from the DLGF yet. The only communication was, today I got a letter, and I don't know if you got this or not, email, I'm old school when I say letter. I got an email from Jenny Banks, who is the Communication Director of the DLGF, who said that this is not commonplace. This is, in the last five years, this is the only time the DLGF has had to instruct the counties, one of 92 counties we are, to reissue tax bills. That this is, this is a very serious mistake that happened. We hope to get it corrected as soon as possible, but it does not happen. I've heard a lot of comments from people saying that, "Oh, this is just a, this is just a little glitch, minor mistake." No, it's not. And, you know, thank God we can correct it. It's correctable, but it is, it doesn't happen all the time.
Well, I wouldn't minimize it either, so I agree with Joey on that part. However, we also had the auditor of state saying there were other jurisdictions that had incorrect property tax bills that went out, and they'll need to issue corrections as well. But I thought we were going to not engage in the circular firing squad here, Treasure Whiskey.
I am not trying to do any firing squad to you, but I don't like it when my name, or Mike Schultz's name, is brought into it, and, and it's minimized by saying, "Oh, this, you know, other people have to do this." Wells County had, they're the only other county of the 92 counties, and you can check this out by going to the DLGF.
If we're going to get in the blame game and stand up here, let's not get in the blame game up here. That's not what we're going to do.
Let me just say that, that the Republican chairman and Commissioner Haney, no, I, no, I want to state the facts, Tim. Tim, will you let me talk?
I'm going to, Tim, Tim, let her talk, and then you can talk. One at a time. One at a time.
You have, you have stood before this body and other bodies, and, excuse me.
You need to stop.
And you have blamed me for things. Let me just say.
You need to stop. You'll get a chance to rebut. Stick to, let's stick to the facts.
The facts are that I was, I was contacted by several taxpayers within the last few days, saying that this isn't a big deal. This is just, Commissioner Haney said that, that this happens in other counties. Let me tell you the other county that it happened, and what happened. Wells County, and I talked to the treasurer there. Walk away from me, I don't care. I talked to the treasurer.
Talk to us.
And what happened in Wells County is, they forgot to add one conservancy district to their abstract. That is not like our county. We are, we totally missed all the homesteads, and now we're finding other mistakes that we did not get on our, on our certified, certified net assessed value, CNavs. And that's what created the mistake. So there's one county, and in Wells County, the DLGF decided not to reissue, because it was one conservancy. We have three conservancies here, and as far as I know, I don't know if those were added or not. I, I don't get to check the abstract, and I don't get to check the CNavs, because of there's a separation of power. If you don't know that, I'm going to tell you.
Don't talk to me. Talk to the council.
Okay, I won't talk to you.
Quiet.
Anyway, if you have any other questions, we are getting so many questions on the phone every day that we're having trouble doing our, the posting of our taxes. So, if anybody up here has questions that I can answer, you can either ask me now. If there's nothing, I will be happy to answer anytime.
Councilman, Councilman Yagowski.
And I'd be happy to answer questions also.
Councilman Yagowski has his hand up.
Thank you, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
They said it couldn't, okay, thank you. The question goes out to just about everybody. We have a check and balance system. That's why the county has approved LAU to be a check and balance system. Joey Wensky, why would that not be caught back and forth by the communication or by a check and, a check sheet from either our auditor or LAU? That's what we're paying LAU to do, is help us get through these problems like that.
Well, okay, that's a good question, and let me, let me explain a little bit about the process. So, the process starts in the assessor's office, and the assessor gets together all the assessed values, sends them down to the state. The state says, "Yes, these are good to go." Send them to the auditor. The auditor gets them around August 1st. When the auditor gets them, then that's, that starts the certified net assessed value process. We have to certify all the assessed values that come from the assessor. Then what we do is, and by the way, LAU is a great company to work with, and I think Darlene can attest to this, because she worked with me in my office on these things many times. After we get the CNavs, then we have a checklist that we go through. LAU sends one, and the auditor of state sends one. One of, on the checklist, it says that you have to apply the homestead and the homestead supplement, and there are some other things on there. That step was missed. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to be very transparent here, because I believe in transparency, even though I know someone's going to get upset with me for saying this, but when we said, "You have to do that step," not only was LAU told, "No, that that step was not on the checklist," I was told that, and so was my chief deputy, Kristi Deckard. So, we tried to say, "Did you do this?" And.
That's not true.
I'm going to ask you to hold your comments.
That is not true.
I'm going to ask you.
Excuse me.
You're taking sides, Randy.
Tim, Tim.
Stop talking until your time to talk.
Let, let me go further. Where were you when this process was going on?
Mrs. Wensky, let's address the council. Address the council.
We, we, we tried to say, you got to do this. We were told no.
No, you should. Address the council, just ignore it.
I have to put the earplugs on this side. We were told, all three of us, Heather, who is our representative from LAO, myself and Christie, we were all told no, that wasn't in the step, so, so it wasn't done. Wasn't done. That went through, went to the, the abstract. Now, I, I don't know why, but LAO would not come on site for some reason. They would not come on site when we did the abstract, even though before the abstract was done, well, well, let me take one step back. I also have a deadline, just like the, the assessor, the auditor, we all have deadlines from the DLGF, and we all have to meet those deadlines. If you don't meet that deadline, you're not going to get those tax bills out on time, and, and then you're going to have a big problem because not only do you not get the tax bills, if you don't get the tax bills out by April 15th, you don't collect. That's a huge problem. So we, let's see, so, so we thought that was done, even though she said, no, that wasn't the step to do. We can't check their work. We cannot do that. We absolutely have separate financial LAO systems. I have mine, the treasurer's LAO system, he has his. We aren't in either one. In fact, I don't have, I don't even have read-only for his anymore. So when the abstract was done, it came back fine. April 8th, the tax bills were sent out. We thought they were fine. April 10th, we started getting calls. Sunday night, we started getting calls. Monday, we got a flurry of calls saying, something's wrong with my tax bill. My, my homestead supplement was not applied right for those people who knew that it was supposed to be 33%. It was not. What happened was, because this mistake was missed, the supplemental, homestead supplement reverted back to the previous year's numbers. And so now all of a sudden, everybody's bill, anybody that had a homestead, anybody that had a exemption, there, there are, there are many, many, many churches who got a $25 fee plus a late fee, they're tax exempt. They shouldn't have had anything. But because this was missed, all of that get put, got put on the tax bill. Now, Mark, wait, let me finish, because when, and let me just go back to, I can't speak to what happened in his office, except for that one thing that I know about. When I was the auditor, I'm the person who did the CNavs, I'm the person who did the abstract, with the help of my staff, my chief deputy and my first deputy, and I would sit in my room and go over, go back and forth with every single checklist, because I wanted to make sure everything was done correctly. I don't know what happened on this. Last year, LAO was on site. Last year, LAO helped them do the abstract. I know that for a fact. I'm sure that they helped them do the CNavs last year. But this year, it wasn't, it wasn't done.
Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say about it.
My last part of my question, Mr. Wensky, is that I don't disagree that we have to move on to get the tax bills out, and I agree with that, and Mr. Staples can answer my same question I asked. But after this is over with, I think our attorney, the commissioner's attorney, need to follow up with why we have a failure in our system. We are paying LAO, and if not utilizing properly, we need to find out what happened here. That's why the council does not know what's going on. We rely on an outside vendor. Why did we not get our services? Whether, whether we failed to use it, or whether they failed to do it, we need to pursue that after the bills are, are sent out.
This is not, this is not LAO's problem.
He's saying, he's saying that after we get everything straightened out.
I'm not saying that, Joey.
Right.
But, but here's, here's what, we, we get our software from LAO.
I totally get it. I'm not saying it. I'm going to ask for, once the bills are out, once the bills are out, we need to follow up with attorneys and find out what happened as far as our LAO, and we're paying for a check system, so this doesn't happen.
Okay, but I, I'm telling you that this is not LAO's job. LAO sells us the software. They don't recheck. That's not their job, that's our job to make sure that that checklist is followed.
We get it. So, so here's the thing we need to focus on. Let's get, and I know you're, I know you, you guys are working on this, getting the tax bills out as soon as possible, because I've been on the phone call. You guys are working very hard to get that done. So we, you guys need to come back at, whether it's the commissioners' meeting and the next council meeting, to give us updates, and we have been getting updates.
Okay, it, it won't be done by the next commissioners' meeting, I could tell you that. But let me also go.
I said update. I didn't say.
Okay.
Finalization.
Well, we're going to.
Because at some point.
We don't even have the files yet.
At some point, the council needs to take action to forgive the penalties that are going to be imposed.
And that's what I was just, the next thing I was going to say.
So we're probably going to have to have a special meeting. We hope we can have a special meeting in May, because it's done before our next meeting, is what I'm, I'm saying. We're anticipating having it ahead of time.
Well, next, next Wednesday is the commissioners' meeting, and I know that we won't be done by then.
Just saying, keep updates. Just saying, hey, we're still working on this, we're getting close.
Okay, so.
Mr. Cunningham.
Okay, and then I, I want to, before I walk away, I want to talk about penalties. Go ahead.
I have a question about, LAO was on site last year. Do we pay extra for that?
You know what? I think we pay a, maybe a fee for, like a, I don't know, some kind of fee. I, I would guess yes.
So we didn't pay that fee this year?
Yeah, we still, well, no, we probably didn't, because they weren't here.
Nobody knows that for sure yet?
You're saying we did?
Well, Darlene might know, because they, it just happened not too long ago. Go ahead. Come in here.
Yeah, so.
Careful, careful getting between them two.
I know. Hopefully, I'm quick on my feet. LAO, if they come on site, they do take it out of a technical, technical support account that we have, and it is, you know, hourly when they're here. That's same as if anybody goes over there for training, we pay for that out of that account.
Right. There's an account for that. Right. That answer your question, Mr. Cunningham?
I think so.
Mr. Mullenhour.
I've got it.
Wait, let me finish with, with Earl first. And we're going to pay another fee now that they have to help us redo this.
Ms. Wensky, you want, you want to take the gal?
Could I?
My question is basically what you were just saying. Do we know what this, this penalty or this additional fee is going to cost the taxpayers of LaPorte County because of this mistake? Do you have any idea yet? I listened to Mrs. Wensky not to you.
Let's not give, should we wait until we get an accurate number?
We, we don't know, but I can estimate it for you.
We know how much the mailing is.
I know much, I know how much the mailing is. There, there's, the mailing fee is going to be $50,000. There's a, we have to re-advertise the rates again, so there's going to be a cost for the newspaper publishing. There's, I have some of it in here. We have to send out files to the mortgage companies, which is another fee, because that's not included in the vendor fee. I, I'm going to estimate that by the time, there, oh, there's a, a fee to LAO, there's a fee to SEH, who does our TIF neutralizations, which you have to include. And I, so I'm going to estimate that it's going to be around $100,000 or more.
So it's, Mr. Yagowski stated, once we get this all straightened out, then we can have much more in-depth conversations about it.
Yes.
All right.
And please share when you do have some figures, why, I think it's going to be well over $100,000 from what I'm hearing, so.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Staples, your response?
Well, you know, I, I really appreciate Joey, the notion of everyone working together and, and all of this, and they come up here and doing a hatchet job on the auditor. Throughout this entire process, I noticed when we were meeting together in the commissioners' chamber, and Joey's biggest concern, when a press release was being created, that she made sure her name was left out of in any way, shape, or form, so that she is isolated and insulated from any responsibility or blame whatsoever. So the point that I want to make is that when I took office in, on January 1st of 2021, the chief tax, tax deputy retired. I persuaded that person to stay an extra week, because I thought it was important that when I have, no, I'm in there new that she's there for, for a week. She left. Joey then, within several months, poached my other two tax employees, and let me finish, do not interrupt me, Randy.
Excuse me, sir. Don't, don't, don't tell me how to run the meeting.
Okay, I won't tell you how to run the meeting. She hired them away, and my tax, she blew a hole in my whole tax side. I had no institutional memory on the tax side. I had a very credible employee put in as a chief tax deputy, and the efforts that that employee has done to get help from downstairs have been very, very limited. Some people have said to me, a number of people have said to me, that they are concerned that someone is trying to sabotage my office. I do not believe that. I, I refuse to believe that, but I've had at least half a dozen people bring that issue up. And with the type of commentary that she's made here tonight, I'm starting to believe that maybe it's true. I wish none of this would have come up this way, that we would have worked together wholesomely and respectfully to get this job done. I told, I was told that last year, the person who sends out the tax bills is the treasurer. They are, we send this, the, we send the abstract, we send the information to the treasurer, they produce, we get a third-party mailing firm to send out the tax bills. Now, if, one, I was told that in prior years, that last year, that taxpayer was reviewed by the treasurer, because ultimately, you're responsible in theory for what you send out to do a spot check or whatever. I don't blame her for not doing it this year, but since we're in the blame game now about who's responsible for what, there's a lot of blame to go around. The Department of Local Government Finance of the state of Indiana certified net assessed values that were incorrect, they could have had a computer program that searched and saw, oh, these numbers are identical to prior years, let's flag this. Well, I talked to the DLGF, and they told me, Scott Madlin at DLGF, we flag numbers that change by large amounts, like more than 10%, because that's what looks funny. We don't flag numbers that don't change at all. So the state didn't catch it, Joey didn't catch it, Tim didn't catch it. I take responsibility first and foremost, because we do produce the tax bill. But the notion of sitting here, trying to engage in, in making sure who's blamed the most in all this, I, I just think it's so unproductive, and, and politically trying to, like, seek the, know the highest cost possible, so the auditor can be held accountable for $100,000, when she has no exact basis to know that's number, let the number be the number, and let's, let's deal with it accordingly. But this is just unproductive, really, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mullenhour.
I think it was hit on here a minute ago, but where were you when this all took place on that Tuesday morning, I think it was, or? From what I hear, you were up, talking about Joey a hatchet job. Were you up there doing a hatchet job on?
That's not up for discussion.
Let's keep it, let's keep it above board.
That's not up for discussion.
I don't blame you.
I had a council meeting, I took off that morning.
Let's get it. I asked him to stop, saying you need to stop.
Well, I'm answering the question. I took, we, we, let me say, let me say this.
If you did, I'm going to let him continue with this conversation.
We, we, no, no, let me just say, we did not know the extent, this is something, information you need to know. We did not know the extent of the problem, as of that morning.
Duly noted, duly noted. Any, anything else? Any other questions? The auditor or the treasurer?
Yeah, just one other thing. I think one of the key elements of this that really went, went bad is when my chief tax deputy was speaking with the former tax deputy, the, when the certified net assessed values were created, the former chief, the former chief, the former tax chief told her to not do this batch update. So that's where a key misinformation happened, was the former employee in that office told her not to do this, and that was, that was mistaken.
Once we get this all sorted out and the bills all straight for all the citizens of LaPorte County, then we'll dig into it.
Thank you. We'll do, I'm sorry, we'll do what?
Dig into it deeper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last part of this whole, last part of this whole debacle is the removal of penalties. As, as you know, the statutory deadline for the payment of your taxes, the first, first spring payment is May 10th. Fall is November 10th. That hasn't changed. So if you don't pay your taxes by May 10th, you're going to get a penalty. Now, there is a way around that, and that is a resolution between the auditor, the treasurer, and the council that says we may remove penalties. This is not the taxpayers' fault. So we are suggesting, if I may talk for you, that the penalties be removed for the spring tax bill only. That does not include if you already have penalties on one of your bills because you didn't pay it. It only applies to 2021, pay 2022, and the spring payment from May 10th until whenever we get those mailed out and collected. So that's, I'm asking, I guess we are asking, that they, that you have a special meeting for us, so that we can, we can work with Mr. DiMartino and with you.
Do you have, do you have an idea of a date?
Well, I, I would ask for, what do you think, two or three weeks? Or do you want to just try for the end of May?
The end of May, we have a regular meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You probably should email them after we hear from the DLGF. Aren't we asking the people not to pay the taxes then by doing that?
No.
Okay.
No, no. Just, just for clarification on that, if someone pays your, pays the taxes right now, and there's a surplus, we will either apply it to their fall payment, or we will offer them a refund, whichever they, whichever they want.
I think it's also worth mentioning that we're encouraging people to pay their taxes, because anyone who, in, in the tax bill that they currently have, that's being affected by the 1% homestead cap, the 2% other real estate, or the 2% or the 3% caps, it's possible that if they are hitting that cap with the revised bill, that their tax bill will not change. There are a number of taxpayers for which their bill will not change when the new one goes out. And we're talking about keeping costs down. We throw out this number of $100,000. It, it's, it's not meaningful yet, because we're going to, I'm going to seek to ask DLGF that if their tax bill doesn't change, that we don't send out tax bills to people whose dollar amount due doesn't change. So that's, that's another issue. But it's, it's worth, it bears repeating to the public, as we encourage them to pay their bills, for the typical homesteader, an analysis suggests that the median change in their bill will be on order of $35, $32 roughly. So we're encouraging people to pay their bills, and generally, generally overstated, you're, you'd be paying extra $32. So that's one of the reasons we're encouraging people to pay their, their bills, is the bills are, for the vast majority of people, they're going to be close. The people who they're not going to be close for are the people whose assessed value shot up a lot, unfortunately, and whose bill is going up a lot because their assessed value went up, where they're not getting that full homestead supplemental deduction because it's flat with the prior, prior year. So, you know, that's, that's, that's where it's.
So what we'll do is, we'll all communicate, and if we need to have a special meeting, we need as much notice as possible, obviously, just advertise the meeting, and Mr., our attorney, Mr. Martino, has the resolutions, the sample resolutions that were sent to us. So he's already, he already knows that it's something that's going to be coming out. Anything else?
And I would just like to reiterate that I will still be available to help.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other department heads? Please come up. Just kidding. Please. One at a time. Yeah, one at a time.
Good evening, Mark Houston, Director of 911. As you all know, last week, April 11th to the 16th, was National Dispatchers Week, and it was a fun-filled week, and I want to say thank you to all the departments, most of which who are here this evening. EMS, the sheriff's department, Michigan City PD, LaPorte City PD, LaPorte City Fire, Michigan City Fire, council people who all came in, the E91 Advisory Board, and many others, vendors, and the general public for all the donations, for food, and the kind words of gratitude for the jobs that they do. We greatly appreciate everyone for recognizing the heroes behind the headset.
Thank you. Thank you for all they do. Any other department heads? Monique?
Good evening, council members. Monique Thomas, interim HR director. I'd just like to inform you guys that this week, Thursday, April 28th, is our grand opening of our North Shore Clinic for all LaPorte County employees who aren't sure under our plan, so we are having our grand opening this Thursday, out at North Shore Health Clinic, and out in Legacy Plaza, down on Monroe. So I just want to let you guys know that that is opening, and it is official May 1st.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Going on to liaison, why, we got a department head? Who's on there? department head? Who's on there? We're good. Okay. Liaison reports. Let's start with Terry.
None at this time.
Mr. Graham Rosa?
I checked in with all my departments and everything's running smooth.
Thank you. Mr. Molenour.
I met with EMS Director Andrew McGuire earlier this month regarding what his request is tonight on the agenda. Also, I attended a health, the health board meeting during the month. I spoke with EMA Interim Director Rob Sabid regarding the status for the relocation of the Siren and Pole in Westville. Should be completed this week, they're hoping, whether, whether permitting. Spoke with Justin Kyle, who's also, regarding his request tonight for look, the Lacrosse Town, Downtown Streetscape Project. And, and he, like I say, he's on the agenda tonight to go over that with us all. On April 13th, I attended a Job Evaluation Committee meeting, and that's for reclassification, a job reclassification, and will be presented that for budget meetings probably in July. Also, the last thing, April 25th, today, I attended the Community Correctional Board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'm just gonna pass on a report, but I have spoken to my liaisons. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham.
No report at this time, but I would like to thank Monique for putting together the Lepore County Job Fair, which I stopped in a week ago approximately. At least just try it.
Thank you. Mr. Yagowski.
Hello, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to, I've spoken to a lot of my representatives, and that's all we'll say right now. So move on to correspondence. Any correspondence? We have none. Thank you. Ordinances and resolutions. First item is Resolution Number 2022-04B, Harrison Electric Public Hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
You have a motion to open a public hearing by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Graham Rosa. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public hearing is now open. What? Mr. Rodriguez here? I think he might be on Zoom.
I am, Mr. President.
So.
And you are correct in terms of ordinance and procedure, you would, I unfortunately unlikely to be in personal attendance this evening, but the public hearing and then consideration of the confirmatory resolution and standard benefits. And I believe Mr. Tom Walma is present with any questions later.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody from the public? Not sure what that was, but anybody from the public? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. Move on to Resolution 2022-04B, Harrison Electric Confirmatory Resolution.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to read 2022-04B by title only.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum and Mr. Cunningham. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. By title only.
As pertains to Harrison Electric, this is a resolution of the Lepore County Council determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming a declaratory resolution adopted by the Lepore County Council.
What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the confirm, the confirmatory resolution.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Molenour. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Go ahead, go ahead.
Just wanted to remind people that it's just over $4,000 is the overall tax savings for a 10, for a 10-year period. This is a local business that has done many positive things for the community. This was discussed at the last meeting, so I don't want to waste time repeating it this time. But I do want to recognize it and thank, and thank them for it.
Mr. President, I'd like to also mention that Harrison Electric is very involved with Marcus on the Franklin Street Bridge, and it helps expedite that project because they're local. There's no doubt that Marcus would be delayed further on any of the motor repairs if they had to ship that out somewhere else. So we're very fortunate to have a company that's large enough, small enough to be a family-owned business, but large enough to handle a large project.
Right. I would ask.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski?
Thank you. I helped with the owner bringing this in a few years back when it became his first tax payment. I want to also point out the two, Mike and Earl, good points, but economic development is always a key thing. And this individual goes through our school systems, brings the students into employment, teaches everything. He has 85% retention of employees. That's, that's fantastic nowadays. Nobody could ask for something better. I would use this as a comparison for any business that complains they can't hire people. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing any other comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is ordinance number 2022-04A, ordinance modifying local income tax rates. This is our second reading.
Make a motion to read by title only?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Gardner, to read by title only. No objections, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? By title only?
This is an ordinance modifying local income tax rates for Lepore County.
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
The ordinance, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Ms. Graham Rosa. See, I'm being very cautious in this meeting.
Thank you.
So I don't mess up. I apologize. So.
I thought I'd have to grow my hair even longer so you could say I was a girl.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Cunningham.
First of all, I'd like to give credit to Mr. Yagowski, who's unable to be here this evening, and we wish him well with his family issue. And, and he was the one that brought up that we send this out to all of the other taxing units, which I think was a very wide decision on his part, because the most informed elected officials are usually those closest to the voters. So Mr. Keel happens to be here this evening, but I certainly don't, even though I'm elected at large as a council representative, I don't know the people in Lacrosse as well as he does, who sits on the Lacrosse Town Council. At any rate, the, the vote from all of those units, as it came back to us, was 56 to four. And two of the four people, Mr. Yagowski being one, said they're not opposed to the lit tax as presented. It's just the format or the timing or whatever. So in reality, it's like 56, 58 to two that do oppose. And that doesn't count the mayors, the chief of police, the fire department, all these other people that weren't counted in the votes that have expressed their concern. I think it was a very smart move on his part. It also delayed, some people say, we rushed through this. We didn't rush through it at all. Took time to hear from Lacrosse and Potawatomi Park and Michiana Shores. And every one of these taxing units, through resolution, came back to us before we made this decision and before we voted on it for the second time this evening. I just want to say that I can't remember the last time, if you were giving away free candy, I don't know that you can get 93% of the people to agree. When you think about this, 56 out of 60 people who are elected, that means the people in those local areas trusted their judgment to make the right decision for their community. I think that's something we all need to think of when we're voting, particularly those of us that were elected as at-large representatives for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? I just want to echo what Mr. Cunningham said, that as far as public meetings, there's been 13 public meetings. We've had two here. 13 public meetings on this one topic. There, I can't remember any other topic that's been voted on in this county that has had that many public meetings, because they were all throughout all the communities in the county, at the different cities, towns, levels, and everything else. So, you mean that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Just, I do want to, I, I do want to, it sounds like my mic's cut off. I do want to, I will be bringing in ordinance at next month's meeting, because the townships are not part of this, to include the 16 volunteer fire departments to receive, they're getting a $10,000 this year out of ARP money, a stipend, that some of the other council members brought up. I think it was a great suggestion. But I would like, I'm going to try and get an ordinance put into place to where that $10,000 is an annual thing, now that this lit is in place, and that they will be receiving benefits. It'll be a minimum of $10,000 for each of these 16 organizations that do not have a municipality overseeing them. So that will be our next meeting. Yes.
Point of order. I, we're supposed to say the same thing. I've worked many years on the council. There has to be something put on that we either endorse it, most of us may not be elected next year. So we don't, we can't endow ourselves to future counties. So we, I have a problem with doing this, because I've been told by many attorneys that we're not allowed to do that, whether in a resolution or not.
Here's what, here's my opinion. I say we're going to do it, and if somebody wants to challenge it later, they can challenge it later. So.
Well, I'm glad you have, I'm glad you have an opinion, Mr. President, but point of order, these are the rules, these are the rules. I don't go by opinion, but it's a fair good thing. Like, I can always make the, with the resolution that I endorse, like we've done numerous times, next year or the year after. But we're only entitled, we can only entitled to do it the year we're doing it. And I believe it should pass.
So it was, it was, this was my option to offer an amendment to the red, to the, to the lit tonight, because my intention was to put it in the lit ordinance. But I was told that's, that can't be done in there. So this is the way to do it. So.
Yeah, I'm just saying as a point of order, I'd say you can do it that way, Mr. Yagowski.
Well, we'll do it, and if somebody wants to challenge down the road, they can challenge it.
I'll challenge it right now.
I'd like to thank Tom Dermody and then all the, all the employees out there that had patience with us to get through this and have faith in us that we'd get this done. I want to thank you for your service. So thank you.
Thank you. I also want to say, I also want to say that Mayor Dermey may have led the charge on this, but this is something that was desperately, obviously with the vote and throughout the entire county, this was something that was needed by everybody. So he led the charge in it, but it wasn't, you know, people are saying that this is Tom Dermity's thing. He's got enough things.
Yeah, we actually do need it on the county level as well. I mean, we gave out a lot of raises last year. And, and I'm ashamed to say that we still have EMS workers that are working for $15 an hour. You know, we've got employees at McDonald's, that, you know, managers making the same amount of money. And these are people that are out saving lives. It's, it's just, it's shameful. And so I'm, I am really glad that we got this passed and that, you know, we can do the right things in all the departments across the entire county.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, new business. Consider approval, if anybody wants to leave, now's the time to, I'm giving you a chance gracefully. Thank you. Moving on, new business. Consider approval of the council's, council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for Lepore County Community Corrections Officer and Field Officer. Do you want to do these one at a time?
One at a time would be best.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Molenour. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is Lepore County Maintenance Housekeeper. They had a housekeeper retire.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Did you get that? All right. Lepore County Juvenile Services Youth Specialist Worker?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Molenour. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is the vacancy, Lepore County Health Department, a vacancy nurse position.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question here.
We, this is what we added. We added D.
Added a nurse, but it was the health department that was asking for a certified medical assistant instead. Is that correct?
Correct. That's a different, that, they were already on the agenda for that.
They, we, they lost a nurse, so they're adding a nurse, and then they wanted to change one of the nurses to a different classification.
Right.
Thank you.
That, that's coming up next. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First of all, that was Mr. Molenour and Mr. Cunningham?
That was myself.
Rosenbaum and Molenour. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lepore County Health Department requesting a current nurse position to be changed to a certified medical assistant position. Amanda, tell us why.
So the last couple of years, we have had a very difficult time keeping our nursing staff fully staffed. We've had a very difficult time keeping our nurses, nursing fully staffed. We have five nurses plus a supervisor. So the last two years, I think last year, or maybe a month, we were fully staffed.
Is it, dare I say, is it money?
Yes, it is.
So, so would an option be to come with a proposal? Or is this a temporary fix?
No. So across the state, a lot of the health departments employ CMAs. A CMA can do a lot of the items that the nurses can do, giving immunizations, drawing blood. They have special training to draw blood. They can do some basic case management, taking vital statistics, entering data. And having a CMA dedicated to that would allow the, our RNs to be out of the clinic and focusing on the case management that by statute they're required to do. So we do have to have a certain number of nurses on staff, but having a CMA, I think we're going to be able, I personally don't think we'll be ever, we'll be able to offer enough when it comes to RNs, what RNs are making today in the hospital settings and the nursing homes. I don't think we'll be able to come close to that personally. I mean, we can have that conversation, but, I mean, we definitely need to have that conversation, but I definitely think a CMA would be appropriate for our department.
So maybe we could hire a CMA now, but then look at the nurses to see if we need to add another position, because I know they, they, they do an awful lot.
They do. They do.
Right.
But right now, you know, with having three staff nurses, trying to keep our clinics up and going and manned, and then having, if somebody's out sick, like happened today, having to scramble to be able to cover our clinic.
How long have you been short, how long have you been short this nurse?
This nurse here, this position that we're requesting, it's been over a year. And then this other position under D, we just, last week, last Friday, I had somebody put in their, their notice. So now we're back down.
Yes.
You know, myself dealing with healthcare all the time.
You got a microphone?
Can you hear me okay? Myself dealing with healthcare all the time. What I'm hearing is that there are a lot of services that a, that a nursing, that a CMA can actually handle. So why have somebody that you're paying at a nurse's salary doing stuff that's lower? Use them at their highest and best use. And you can fill a lot of the intakes and vitals and, and immunizations with somebody who is a CMA. So I think it becomes more efficient for the county and hopefully for the clinic. So.
My thought was to hire the CMA in addition to keeping a full, full nursing staff.
Hey, if you want to give me another position, I'm all over it. But, yeah, sorry, I don't mean to be flippant.
So what's your, what's your pleasure with this? I mean, obviously, she's been short somebody for a year, so we got to get somebody in there now.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve.
I would second that motion, and, uh, that's why we hire managers. I mean, we, if she's the manager of that department and she feels that she can get by with CMA, let's try it. Six months from now, she has to come back and tell us it doesn't work.
Thank you, sir.
She, I attended their Health Department meeting, and she explained it very well there, and I, I might thought was first, why would you want to do that, but after hearing her reasoning, why, I agree 100%.
And just coming in, in fact, coming up very quickly, the, the state of Indiana is dropping the blood level for children, um, a reportable disease from fi, from 10 down to 5. So with that, when that happens, a nurse gets involved, goes and does a home visit with the family, sits down and does an interview, and follows that case with their doctor, tracks that, making sure the blood is getting drawn, they're seeing their doctor, levels are coming down. We have an environmental health specialist that goes out, takes samples. It is a very long drawn-out process, and it could take a year or more following this child. When that level drops, we've, we've only had maybe three or four a year the last couple of years. With this level dropping down to 5, the state of Indiana, following all of our numbers over the last several years, is saying our caseload is gonna increase by 40 kids a year. So I'm gonna need that, that nurse to focus on that and not be in clinic giving immunizations.
I'm sure we'll talk before budget time, and we'll figure out where you're at, so.
Thank you.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lepore County Sheriff, consider policy change, county employees' health insurance. Retirees that would make sheriffs deputies eligible for county health insurance, if eligible for full retirement, pension benefits at age 50 with 20 years of service.
Good evening, council members. Ron Heig, Chief Deputy, if I may approach, I've got some.
You may.
Sounded like an electric guitar.
Shag me out of here, I guess. This is something that we've been, I wouldn't say battling with, but been discussing and looking into this for quite some time, and we've developed, I wouldn't say a problem or an issue, uh, but the current county policy for retiree health insurance states that if anybody hired prior to February 1st of 20, of 2005, must have served a minimum of 20 years of service and must meet a minimum age of 55. The retiree will pay a third of the premium of the health insurance when they retire, and they states that the, the employee must transition to Medicare or Medicaid when they become eligible to 65. Any employee hired after February 1st of 20, 2005, must have a minimum service of 25 years of service and must, uh, meet a minimum age of 60. They will pay a half of the premium, and also they must transition to Medicare or Medicaid, uh, when they become of eligible age. This policy, uh, from my understanding and talking to HR Director Mossman when she was here, follows the Indiana Perf guidelines. The problem that we run into is that the sheriff's office, we have our own pension program, and we don't belong to the Indiana Perf. Our officers can retire at the age of 50 with 20 years of service, or they can serve up to a maximum of 32 years of service for their pension plan. This creates a problem as there's a gap from when a deputy can retire to when a deputy can retire and take the county's health insurance. 55 years of age prior to 2005, or 60 years of age after 2005. A deputy would have to stay at the sheriff's office for additional five, 10 years, just to, just to be eligible for the county's health insurance. This doesn't include that a deputy who retired in at the age of 21 or 22 years of age, maxes out with 32 years of service. He'll only be 53 or 54. We're forcing that officer, if he needs to take the retiree health insurance, to stick around for another two to seven years until they hit that 55, 60. It's gonna become even more apparent when these younger deputies start to come up and who are hired at the age of, of, hired after the date of 2005, that we're gonna make these guys stick around seven additional years just so they can retire with health insurance. What we would like to propose is that we lower that age, that threshold, down to a more respectable level, whether it be 50 years of age, 52 years of age. That way they can retire when they are eligible for their pension, that 50 and 20 mark. Uh, we, we obviously understand that this is going to be a cost to the county. We don't believe it will be that burdensome. Out of the 66 deputies that we have on the department, only five fit into that category of 50 to 55 and 20 years of service. Out of those five, maybe one or two would actually take it and run because they would financially be able to. Most guys aren't financially able to retire at the age of 50. Over the next course of the five years, I see maybe two or three guys that would actually be able to financially leave the sheriff's office or leave Lepore County, uh, prior to the age of 55 or the age of 60. So, again, we're asking for your support. As you can see on the next page, I, I did a kind of a cost analysis of what it will cost the county, and maybe some potential savings as we allow this officer to retire and hire in a brand-new officer. Uh, if it's an employee only, uh, who chooses the $1,000 deductible, the total premium paid between the employee and the county is $11,624 a year. The county's portion of that is $9,880 per year. If we allow that officer to retire and pay a third of the premium, the county's portion is only $7,788. And if we allow that person after 2005 at half the premium, the cost would only be to the county at $5,812 a year. A little bit of a savings there versus paying out the full $9,888 a year, which the county's currently doing. Second, if the county, the county would also save money with the retirement of a 20-year deputy captain, let's say, who makes $67,412. If he retires and we hire in a new deputy to replace him, and they start at $51,792, that's almost a $16,000 a year savings right there alone. So this, we're coming to you to ask for this change. We've gone to the, uh, it's gone to our pension board, it's gone to our merit board, it's gone to the county commissioners. According to Barb Mossman, it's gone to, uh, the county's insurance committee as well, and it's all passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, I've got a quick, quick question. Isn't it also true that if, um, if somebody retires, and they have a spouse that has insurance, that they have to go with that spouse's insurance?
Correct, and also if they find another job after they retire.
And they're offered benefits, they have to take it. It's not an option.
It's not an option. They have to come off the county's insurance then. Right.
I was gonna ask the same question, because it's not printed on this.
Right.
She, you gave us, it just says Medicare or Medicaid. It should say, or a spouse's plan is available, or other employment.
I tried just to make some highlight note to be brief with this.
Yeah, all right. So just, just one more clarification. The retirees' insurance is offered to a family or to the individual and a spouse?
Individual and a spouse, the way the current policy reads right now.
All right. Just want to make sure, so it's not a, yeah. Okay. It's very, it's very identical to, uh, Michigan cities. Mr. Yagowski?
Yeah, um, as I stated, this has stated a couple of times in the past, well, the sheriff would have to wait for retirement. If you look at pensions that are in the, uh, in the, um, the, you have like Steel, Middle, Snipco, BP, that have pensions, this is not uncommon for businesses, for employees have to wait to take it. I mean, that's, that's, that's the same case with all the pensioners that have that. I know that, I know that for a fact. So the sheriff's not, uh, group is not any different than the people that are working these jobs like that. That's, that's something that, um, that doesn't affect it. And at the age of, you're talking age of 50, let's just say that these, um, officers go and find a job for security, a security, get 1099, we're gonna be paying them for 15 years. That's a long period of time to be paying in the insurance program as we see it. Um, I wouldn't have a problem if we looked at it, maybe if you want to lower it down to 53 instead of 55, but going to 50, again, you're going to encourage that to happen, and then you'll be back telling us we don't have enough officers to fill the job, there's not enough young people filling the applicants. So it kinda is a double-edged sword. It's gonna come back to haunt you eventually, because that was just stated during the IT tax, that we don't have enough people to fill the, the new jobs coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Yagowski. Mr. Rosenbaum?
Okay, um, we talked about the current policy, and we have this date here, February 1st, 2005. That's pretty old at this point. So are we recommending that we just, we are eliminating this February 1st date?
They pay half after, hired after 2005, so they make a.
So that, that's, that will be the difference if we keep that in, and eventually everybody's gonna be.
Yeah, I'm not looking to, to revamp the county's policy at all. I'm just looking to maybe add an addendum to that, uh, the county's current policy that will allow these deputies, these officers, uh, from that 50 to 55 to 60, uh, to be able to retire, take the health insurance, because let's face it, the average lifespan of a police officer's 59 years of age in America. And now we're gonna tell them you've gotta stay till 60 before you can even retire with the insurance? So that, that makes it difficult.
I mean that.
Yeah, and you know, I, I'm a, I'm a prime example, that I was hired in at the age of, of 21 years of age. At 32 years of service, my pension will be maxed out. I'll be 53. Now you're telling me I have to stick around for an additional two years? You, you're paying me not to work, basically, or you're paying me to stick around just to fill my two years, when you can allow me to retire, bring in a much younger, uh, or lower salary with that new officer?
I got a.
This is, this is just, excuse me, this is just an option, and you've all heard me saying, uh, Mr. Molenhour, you'll agree, that this is a young man's occupation. Oftentimes it becomes a liability, and we have worked with those that were 60 or older, trying to do a young man's profession and just couldn't keep up, and there were limitations and liabilities. And after serving 32, 35 years in this profession, you deserve to be able to retire out of this line of work, and, and quite frankly, most, because we don't make a lot of money doing this job, will have to get another job. So there's a good chance that they'll find another job when they leave this job, which will have insurance, so it would actually reduce the number of people that are gonna be taken advantage of this.
All right, as, I got one comment. As, as I stated, you know, it's been talked about for years, and I'm glad to see finally something's coming, uh, forward with this. And, uh, the part that I always have stressed, and, and I'm glad you put it on here, as far as the rank structure, when you get one retire, that's gonna allow somebody, it's gonna save us, the county, the taxpayers, money, because you're, you're cutting, you're getting a new officer for less money, and also it, uh, it's motivation for the officers that are there to advance in rank at the same time, so.
I, I agree with Mr. Molenhour 100% in that it helps the younger people see some advancement, but that also cuts into the savings, because if those people advance, they all make more money. So three or four people might get promoted, one of your top guys leaves, three or four guys get promoted, all that money keeps moving upward as well.
To a certain degree, but they still have their step increases that they're not entitled to until they earn those years of service.
Right, but the only, you can't just compare, the top guy leaves and the bottom guy comes in, and that's the savings. It's slightly less than that.
Well, but we've also come before you, and we've argued that, uh, for instance, when I was Sergeant and Captain, I was supervising subordinates that were making more than I was, because our rank structure and the pay hadn't caught up with it. So it's not that much of a factor.
That's why, that's why you're the sheriff now. All right, we made up for it, so.
Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion to adjust the, uh, the policy, uh, that they must meet, uh, if they've hired prior to February 1st, 2005, that, uh, they must have the 20 years of experience and at the minimum age.
Service.
Service, sorry, and must meet a minimum age of 52. Um, and then the retiree will pay one-third of the premium, uh, et cetera, et cetera. We then go to the employees hired after February 1st, 2005. Um.
I'll second.
All right, well, I just want to make sure we get.
I think all the other terms with somebody hired after that, they gotta have 25 years of service is fine.
No, we're still looking, anybody, they will pay half of the premium.
But they gotta have 25 years of service versus 20.
No, I'm still looking, I know that the current policy.
Were you looking for that to be 20?
You want that 20?
20 as well. Was, they say 52 and 20.
It says.
Before.
It says.
2005, and I like to see.
It says 20 and 55 prior to, and then 25 and 60 afterwards.
Right. What I would like to see that.
We're looking for the 20 and 52 and both, the same.
At both, but the premiums.
But the premiums are paid differently.
Correct.
Then that will be my motion, that the second set hired after February 1st, has a minimum of 20 years of service and must meet a minimum age of 52.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Ms. Graham Rosa. I just want to, is there, uh, first of all, is there any other comments?
I've got a question, though, for the attorney.
I would be, uh, it would be pretty hypocritical of me to not support this, in that I was a retired teacher in Michigan City area schools. When they consolidated schools, this is exactly how they got rid of the highest-paid employees. They paid their insurance. So I took early retirement at 55, only because they didn't have to worry about insurance. So I, I can certainly understand.
Mr. Molenhour?
Just for the attorney, I, I don't think I have to abstain on this, do I?
Well, I mean, they, they are basing it based on the pension plan, and they brought that in. It would probably be a good idea, too, just for posterity.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions down there?
I just want to say that I, I see this being 30-plus years in the fire service, and, and originally we had 55, you could retire 55, and then they reduced it to 52 through the state pension, but our health insurance was still at 55, and they did reduce that down to 52. What I seen is it's, it's a great tool for recruiting also, because it, it gives somebody that, that sense that if I want to go, I can, they've got that option there, so it's a great thing. The reality is, is very few people take advantage of that county insurance, insurance during that time period, as you stated, because they either gotta go find another job, or their spouse has another job.
Right.
Because, um, so the reality is, is there aren't that many people that fall into that or gonna leave exactly on that day, but it's, it's a great tool when people compare departments to departments that that option is there.
Right, and, and again, I'm, I'm extremely confident that if this gets approved tonight, we're not gonna see a mass exodus out of the sheriff's office. We're not gonna see a mass exodus in the next year or two. Like I said, over the next five years, two, maybe three individuals that may take this.
Right. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me.
Aye.
What was that?
He said.
Aye.
Oh, aye, okay, thank you, all right.
One abstained.
Thank you. And one extension. Did you get that one? Mr. Molenhour. Thank you. All right. Lepore County MS4 Director Position to Meet Stormwater Permit Compliance. So there's been a lot of work. Monique and Regina have been, um, doing a lot of work, and I've been talking to them a lot. The MS4, as everybody knows, Rick Brown retired. Um, and, um, so there's been considerable input. The commissioners hired Regina. Would you want to state your name, just so everybody?
Regine Corthaus.
Right.
I'm Thomas Intramaker, Director.
We know who you are. Just kidding. But, um, so Regina's expertise is in stormwater and?
Correct. I am the retired MS4 Stormwater Coordinator from the state of Indiana in the Office of Item and the Water Quality. I'm also an adjunct professor in environmental law policy at Indiana University. Uh, I was hired to come in here because of a change in the permit status in Indiana. Indiana went from permit by rule, which was administered through rule boards, and then passed through the state, uh, legislature, to what the federal government required was permit by general administrative permits, master permits. So the old permit went out December 18th, the new one came in on December 18th. This is now the time that all regulated entities have to go back in, submit a new notice of intent, and then reevaluate their program. And Lepore was not doing so well. Their program was not in compliance. Um, unfortunately, it passed two regulatory, uh, procedures through the Solid Water District, which is not eligible to regulate federal, uh, permit requirements. And this is a very important time now, as you. And this is a very important time now, as you move in this direction. Because when you have a federal permit regulated under the Clean Water Act, and you're not in compliance with this permit, it has a great deal of impact on your state revolving loan funds and your federal highway dollars. And you don't want to go down that road. So we're trying to get the county in a place where they are in compliance. Plus the fact the county has a leadership role here. And you have other MS fours in the county. Yesterday, Item released a new list of fifty-two new MS fours. Two of them are in your county, Potawatomi Park and Michiana Shores. These communities aren't going to have a clue on how to do this. And so with the county's guidance and leadership, they hopefully will be able to move ahead and partnership, too.
So the purpose for tonight's meeting is, is they're restructuring the office before they go out for, take applications. They're taking applications, but before they hire somebody. Is, the intent is to get the pay up in this position so that we get qualified applicants. And we're hoping to get a salary of sixty-one thousand dollars. And we're able to do that by, there was some restructuring of the budget. And then the non-reverting fund that they have there also, we probably need probably another seven thousand dollars out of that. So that's what they're asking for the council's approval on. They're not asking for additional funds. They're asking for it to be able to restructure the budget so that they can advertise this. Well, they wouldn't advertise the pay, but they can at least tell people when they interview what the pay is, so.
Probably so far, we only have two applicants.
Right. So you need to apply if you're interested. Mr. Gauske.
Yes, thank you. Being, I think Terry Gardner and myself were the ones that initially put this program together in Lepore County. We're there to get all the communities to invest into it. The sad thing about this issue is that there was money that was spent, that was spent illegally. Or if Mr. Novak wants to use a different terminology, I'd be willing to listen to it. But we, we had allocated money that was supposed to be taken from all the municipalities to pay for this. But the money was, the monies were spent, and spent without the county's permission. I don't disagree that we should get something going, but as, as you directed the conversation, saying, we're going to help two municipalities that are trying to get on board, that don't know what's going on. That was our job to do that in the first place. They were paying us to do that work. So I'd like to know where the money was being spent and how the money was being spent. Mr. Gardner, I know you, you were familiar with this when we started this program. Michigan City said that we were doing a terrible job at it. They pulled out. We supposedly resurrected the whole program so that, and so every municipality but Michigan City was paying into it. Then we find out later on that he was spending money that wasn't supposed to be spent. I invert that about it because I agree, there should be a program so we don't lose that. But I don't think we're any better off than we were a month ago. And I like to look into it more than just hiring a person for sixty-one thousand dollars. But I believe we have, we failed miserably over the last ten years, twelve years of this program.
So, so Mr. Gauske, I just want to address that, that's why Regina has been brought in, an expert in this, which wasn't done when this was originally set up. And this is, this is through the process-
But it was, Mr. Novak. It was brought in, the state of Indiana came and helped us set it up. So we were in initial groups that were allowed to take all the municipalities. And we were going to lead the, which we were allowed to do by the MS four. And we were able to fix that twelve to fifteen years ago. I don't remember the exact date, but we can look it up.
So it's, it's not to say that Michigan City and all these other communities can't pull in as they were doing.
I'm not saying that.
I am saying that, Mr. Gauske.
We had collected money, there should be money in that fund. There should be a negative amount. Where is that money at right now so we can pay for this?
Wait, 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 wait. Who said there's a negative amount in an account?
Yo, you said that we have to, we have to have some money and there's not enough money. We put plenty of money into it. All these years, this municipality, all these years, Mr. Novak, we've been putting the municipality's money in this account. Where is the money?
It's, it's in the auditor's bank account. It's a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars. That is called the participants' account fund. That money is all there. That money's all there.
That participant money is stuff that we paid for. The county, as a county, we should have that money included. I'm saying redirect that money, and I'm the person, I have no problem with that.
So that, that's why they're here asking us.
No, we, of a hundred and thirty thousand, there's no additional dollars. We've got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in that account.
Nobody asked for, Mr. Gauske, let me back up. There's a non-reverting fund that has about thirty-two, thirty-eight thousand dollars in it, somewhere in there. Somewhere in that range, thirty-some thousand. Then there's a participants' fund that has a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars in it. They are not, they're asking for the county's blessing, the commission council's blessing. They're not asking for one dime from us.
And Mr. President, will you allow him?
You may.
And while you're doing, while you're doing that, Mr. President, what I said was, I want to know where Mr. Brown spent some of that money. Which account did he spend that was not authorized by the council?
That's, that's, that is a whole nother subject.
I'm willing to listen to it, where the money's at, that's fine.
It is, it is-
It was a mishandle by certain individuals, and I want to know where the money's at.
And, and I agree with you. And I think if we want to launch an investigation, which I know we do, into the previous directors, previous, previous director, I guess would be the accurate word, what exactly he spent the money on? Because I know with the non-reverting fund, it requires council's approval. And I, I don't remember them coming back and asking to spend money. I know they didn't require permission out of the-
They had their own board, so I assumed that that was-
No, yeah, but that's not the stat, the ordinance is the council has to appropriate specifically out of the non-reverting fund.
Right.
So they have to come before the council.
And the participants' fund-
We don't know.
The participants' fund, Vaughn just found it, but we're looking for more information on it, correct?
And Mr. Novak, you understood that you might have talked two days ago, or whatever it was. At the time, you didn't know where the money's at, so there was no participant fund.
We did, but we didn't, we-
If you found it, that's fine.
We didn't know, we didn't know where the ordinance was. And it sounds like there is no ordinance for the participants' fund, but there was a date that it was created. And we need to create ordinances and either amend the order, change ordinances so that they're adequately done and structured the right way, so.
Mr. President, keep in mind that the county cannot take the responsibility of any MS four that's permitted under this permit. They are responsible for their own permit. The only thing you can do as a co-permit is you can enter into agreements with memorandums of understanding if you want to take on that work. But you cannot have an ordinance, you can't have anything else that lumps you altogether.
You cannot require them to-
They have to have their own-
Doing on their own free will.
Notice of intent, right.
Yep.
And that, and that part I agree with. I think you're right, because that was, the original ordinance says that they will take the guidance of the county. And there, there's no problem with the guidance of the county. The smaller municipalities cannot afford to go get attorneys or stuff like that to look at it. So they trust our leadership to do that. That's fine. But again, I just, the last time you and I talked, you did not realize that that money was there. If the money's in a separate account, that money's okay, but I'd still like to know where the rest of it's at.
So there was some confusion at first as to whether there was a non-reverting fund. And it turns out there's a non-reverting fund and a participants' fund. So there's two separate accounts. Because prior to this, in having the auditor dig into it, we weren't sure exactly what was there with the previous director. So, and yes, there are some things that he probably spent money on that is questionable. I believe he did it with the intent that he was doing education. It's questionable. I wouldn't say that it was fraudulent in any way. The intent wasn't fraudulent, let's put it that way. Maybe I should just-
I think bypassing the council was fraudulent, that's what I'm going to say.
Right. So, so this is just allowing them to restructure the pay for the director so that they can hire a qualified person?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Molinari, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions?
What is the current salary?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, three fifteen.
Forty-nine, three fifteen. And so how did you come up with the price of?
I, I did a comprehensive rate study. I'm the executive director of the Indiana MS four partnership, which is made up of all the one-hundred-and-eighty-two permitted entities in the state. So I did a review of other counties, and the salaries ranged from fifty-eight to ninety-one thousand.
And what are our current, the current counties next to us receiving? And the only reason I ask this is because when we were looking at the police salaries and the EMS salaries, you know, they, they were pretty much told us, do not compare them to surrounding counties. And now all of a sudden, we're taking this position, and we're going from forty-nine thousand all the way up to sixty-one thousand. And, you know, and you're saying that you're doing an analysis of the entire state.
I just offered the, the salaries that were out there from Elkhart County at ninety-one. But it's difficult to do because in some counties, like say Lake County, Bill Emerson, the Lake County surveyor, runs the MS four program. So he's not really getting a, a MS four coordinator salary. So it's a little hard. But try to, to work with the county on what they have. And what's in that revolving loan fund that could be used to help support the position?
Do we know what Porter or what St. Joe County or Knox is paying?
Knox is not an MS four county.
Okay.
Okay, St. Joe County is, and I don't know what theirs is.
Is there any way we can get that information before we made a vote on it?
Yeah, we can.
We can put it off for a month.
The only, the only issue we have is on May the tenth is the MS four annual meeting. And this is designed specifically for all the new MS fours so they can learn how to put the permit program in place. So having your participation there would be very important to do that.
If, but you said that the range of how many MS four coordinators?
I looked at six, and these were counties that, that I had worked with. And I called them to see where they were at, just to try to get a buzz thing. And it's certainly not a comparative study. Baker Tilly does a comparative study of not only on stormwater fees, but on what coordinators are being paid. And one of the reasons it's so hard to do is because many counties have the coordinators doing more than one job. And in some municipalities, you have a coordinator that is the wastewater treatment plant supervisor, somewhat like Michigan City. And they put the stormwater program in the wastewater treatment plant. So it's hard to determine what that pay is.
So you'd like to find out what Porter and-
Porter has another system where it's in the engineer's office. And Michael Navatney is the, is the coordinator. But he also has, or is in charge of the MS four program. But he also has a new engineer that's the MS four coordinator. She sits on my MS four state board, so I didn't ask her what her salary was.
Yeah, I just have a difficult time with this because we're looking at raising it twelve thousand dollars. And, you know, and we were looking at the county planner positions, like I said, the police positions. I mean, we, we were really going out there and saying, let's not compare them to, to local areas. And here, we're, we're doing, she's doing an analysis. And we don't really know how we come up with twelve thousand dollars more, other than the fact that we can say, okay, we have the money there, so let's just spend it.
It was not a-
That's not what was suggested.
No, it was not an official analysis. It was just what else is out there.
Could you repeat the, could you repeat those areas that you did take a look at?
Elkhart County, Tippecanoe County, Porter, St. Joe, or not St. Joe, Lake County, and down on the Ohio River, which is the city of Evansville, and I forgot the county.
And River.
Yeah.
So Porter County's already in there?
Porter County didn't give me a real answer. Amanda, the new MS four coordinator, works under the engineers department. And I think she's somewhere above fifty thousand. But you're absolutely right, to not compare what others are doing because they do the program differently. And you do, you're going to have a different type of program in place.
So it's hard to compare apples to apples.
It is.
So in your recommendation, this was your recommendation based upon what you know from your knowledge at the state, that this is what you would think that a typical person would be doing based upon what, based upon what the person would be doing in our county should be paid based upon some of those similarities?
Correct. And also to make sure that you have a qualified person apply for the job.
Is there, like, education on that job description? What is, what would it be?
Can you go over that real quick? You got it, Andy?
I think the minimum is a bachelor's degree in environmental science, water quality, or related field.
We got to talk into the mic.
It requires a bachelor's degree in environmental science, water quality, or related field. Previous experience is preferred knowledge of the Indiana Department of Environmental Management guidelines and compliance. And you have to obtain at least twelve hours of continuous stormwater education credits annually. So there's some continued education.
I, I think the one thing that I got out of this, having these meet talks, especially with Regina, is that you didn't understand the importance of this MS four coordinator and the, the responsibility that this person bears for Lepore County. Especially when you're talking highway dollars and everything else are at stake. And if something isn't done right, then there's a lot of other fundings that could go away. So what's your pleasure? So I know there was a mention by Mrs. Graham Rosa to-
Mrs. Graham Rosa.
What did I say?
Mister. Didn't you just-
I didn't say mister, I said miss. No, I didn't.
I think it's important to keep in mind that you have to settle a salary for the position that you feel comfortable with. It's more important to put this person in place. So you're looking at mega dollars coming into the state revolving loan fund. You want to be eligible for that. You want someone that's able to manage the program and, and get it done. So whatever level you want to put at the position is more important.
What's your pleasure?
Did we have a motion before? I, I thought I made a motion, and I thought-
No, you're second. I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion, I seconded.
Motion by Mr. Molinari, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'd like to move forward. Would you like, with it, okay?
All right.
Do you have any question?
What's that?
Do you have any question yet?
Yeah, what's your question?
More of a statement, like you said. Again, I have no problem with increasing the salary. I don't think we're even close to having that number. Mrs. Graham Rosa is exactly a hundred percent right. We can't compare the numbers we're talking about. We have to do our own, we can't go over some of our salaries. For example, if our planner messes up, we lose money. If our engineer messes up, we lose money. This is not uncommon for the council to deal with these situations. This is way too much money to offer this job without no knowledge base whatsoever.
Say that last sentence again.
That's too much money to offer somebody without any knowledge of what the base should be.
It's a recommendation by somebody that's got the experience, that's why-
I can give you, I've people who said they had experience and say we should pay a hundred. Look at Michigan City's salaries. Mr. Novak, you're, you're really good about that. Look, they pay between anywhere from fifteen thousand dollars more money than we do for a lot of positions that we have. That doesn't mean it's right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, two to, five to two. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Justin Keel, Town of La Crosse, downtown Streetscape project requesting a favorable vote not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand. He came and did a presentation at our listening, and he's got handouts.
I got handouts.
Appreciate your approach. Sounds great. Thank you. Is that La Crosse?
Vote, Randy, what does that mean?
What's that? Well, in other words, he doesn't, he doesn't need the funds right now because he's going to go to IDIM for additional. There's a lot more process to this, what he, his bigger project.
That's right.
So I'll let you-
We're, we're looking to bundle funding from a variety of different sources here. The Town of La Crosse is using its ARP funds of about a hundred thousand dollars, plus about two hundred thousand of our savings. We're looking to get a hundred and seventy-five thousand from you folks. Bundle that together, go to indot, ask for some additional local funds, which they can then match with federal funds so that we can put together a comprehensive project here to redo our downtown.
The reason we said favorable vote is because he doesn't need the actual money right now. right now. So he just wants to know that the council supports it.
That's right. We're still twisting arms within that.
We're going to do this out of ARP funding anyway, correct?
Correct.
Isn't there a way we can just set aside the money across revitalization program? If it falls through, we don't use it, then we just put the money back into ARP, right? We just set it aside within ARP. Is that all right, Mr. DiMartino?
Right now, you would just be doing a motion of support. You can ask the auditor if they would keep it, or do you want him to encumber those funds?
But we gotta keep, we gotta keep track of our favorable votes.
Correct.
So we don't over.
Right.
Right.
Favor our account.
Either that, or do you want it encumbered?
We haven't got our second installment.
We do expect that about a month from now.
We haven't got the second installment. You expect it in a month?
Yeah.
Right.
Probably less.
So we just do the favorable vote now and encumber it later?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Ms. Grammerosa. Anybody that lives south thirty has to abstain?
Born and raised south of thirty.
I know you were. I was waiting.
Mr. Garner and I both south of thirty.
I know. Here it goes.
We're taking it as a motion of support, correct?
A motion of support, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
The Town of LaCrosse thanks you for your support.
No problem. Thank you. Next item is LaPorte County Prosecutor requesting permission to dispense funds from adult probation service investigator.
D with the nurse thing, or did we?
What?
You added D.
We did that one.
We did that one.
Yes, that was the CMA.
Sorry. Thank you.
No, we're good.
This was tabled in March.
Good evening.
We got it all worked out.
So this is.
Adult protective services. It's a big difference.
He's got money. He's got all kinds of money. I know that.
All right.
There is one issue.
Excuse me. Was this actually tabled? Then we'll need a.
This was tabled.
Make a motion, don't table it.
Yeah.
Motion by Ms. Rosenbaum to take it off the table, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
If we do this, I need authorization to be able to, there's, what I've been told is in the grant, there's not enough to pay the employer portion. So that would end up coming out of the employees' end, which would short them. So I want to have permission to be able to spend my infraction deferral to pay this extra amount above the grant so that they.
What it, what is the?
The, you're, because you have to pay out of the employer section part, you got to pay perf, and you got to pay all the OSDEI and all that other stuff. That payroll, Mr. Staples could tell you, all that stuff. But what happens is with the amounts is that we don't have enough in the grant we're short, is what I was explaining to me by Cheryl. And so I just want to be able to pay that money out of infraction deferral, the the employer portion. Do you? Do you understand what I'm saying? Because otherwise.
You'll make the difference.
I wouldn't make the difference up.
Mr. Novak?
What's that?
Let me, let, since we.
Go for it.
Okay.
He'll explain.
I'll explain it.
All right.
So the goal of this is to offset the bonuses for the people at APS. And so if they're, they're going to have to take all their bonus monies before before June. And in doing so, we're, Mr. Mr. Lake is going to be a thousand or two thousand dollars short because of the employer portion.
Contribution.
Of contribution. And so what he wants to do is be able to go into his infraction deferral fund to make up that shortfall.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum and Ms. Grammerosa.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just a question. Is it that between a thousand and two thousand, or that's pretty close, or? I I think actually it's about nine hundred dollars with with the amount of the grant. The way we're doing it, the way that the part-time gets no bonuses by the county's decision. So we have the nineteen hundred dollars.
And just so everybody knows, all the employees are getting the same amount as they would have if they stayed an employee of the county. They're not getting additional. They're just getting it upfront because this was a grant that he applied for. They're waiving the additional bonuses from the county. So.
Yeah, the next, the next.
Right.
And and so it's saving the county.
Right.
And with me picking up this portion, it saves the county.
Sixteen thousand, something.
It's like more than that, almost eighteen thousand.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
I'm glad you approved the the thing last week, the EMS out of by Rolling Prairie. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. It's closer to your house. What are you saying?
I'm getting older.
How you, how you feeling today? Yeah. Thanks, John. The next item, item number two, LaPorte County Treasurer. That is not coming off the table tonight. So that is still being something that's being worked out during the agenda tonight. I should have asked for that to be removed, so we're going to leave that where it sits.
Table?
Yep. Appropriations, transfers, and requests. LaPorte County Planner requesting additional appropriations from Cume Bridge for Bridge one sixty-six, an amount of seventy-three thousand, and Bridge ninety-four, replacement, an amount of seventy-five thousand. Mitch Bishop, how are you?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Last October, I came in front of you. At that time, I applied for a grant, actually for three separate bridges, and we were awarded two of them for just under three million dollars. And part of the requirement of application was a commitment letter. And at that time, in October, a commitment letter was signed by the council, basically stating, if you receive these grant funds, we acknowledge that twenty percent of the total costs would come from the council. So I'll be for you tonight for that twenty percent.
Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Molenhour. Is there any other questions or comments?
Amen. Keep up the great work.
Good job, Mitch. Thanks.
Wonderful job bringing money into the county.
Just on that note, I don't know if you saw it last week, I just received eight hundred and thirty-six thousand to help with the Lincoln Trail Extension as well.
That's great. Those those trails in this county, people really appreciate that, especially.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be a nice trail.
That'd be great.
Really, it's a beautiful area.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Mitch.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item is LaPorte County Park requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or ARP for the design work of the BiO Swell slash Rain Guard at Bloom Park. We did a favorable vote last month for three thousand dollars. Jeremy is not able to attend because he has another obligation tonight. So.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cunningham out of ARP. Any other questions or comments? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is LaPorte County Maintenance, additional appropriation out of Riverboat or ARP for security wall in the surveyor's office, an amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Tony Hendricks was unable to make it tonight with me. So this came to us about a month and a half, two months ago, that, or some issues that they were having within their department, people walking around there as they were coming in, they'd walk around the countertop. This consists of a glass enclosure over the countertop, and then a three-foot door on the side. Right now, you do not have a three-foot walkway that they presently have, so would have to cut the countertop down. We did get some pricing. Lowest price was eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
So I'll ask the question. Why does, why does the walkway need to be three-foot going around the side? If the public, why does that need to be ADA compliant if it's not for the public? Or they, or is it the public can come back there?
Well, they do bring public, public, public back there at times. So, but in order to put a doorway in to seal this off, it would have to be made bigger so we could have a three-foot door in.
Next question, why is it a glass door? A see-through door, a fold-you door?
We put a glass door on it because it was a glass front, and it was just to do the storefront enclosure. It all just tied in a lot easier instead of putting a wood door and having wood framing on it. It's gonna also have to, it'll have a fob system on it, just like always to keep it secured from people going in and out.
Mr. Yagowski.
They have the opportunity back when we had the money available to do this, but they decided not to. A lot of other departments have put the plexiglass up. Again, the doors, you can get a door right now. How much was that door again? Nine thousand dollars with insulation?
The total price is eighteen thousand, nine. I don't know exactly how much.
I thought it was nine, but okay. There's no way that this is worth, this project's worth this kind of money. I mean, you put plexiglass up, you know, you can go to other places that have the same amount of departments that have plexiglass, or just as fine, and a regular door is just as fine. This is not, and by the way, if they have anything that they need, they're able to go out there with a laptop or computer that can show the public if they have to. I've been in a department, they do not take people back there. And I told you that, but they don't. If they do, they can take a laptop or computer and show them what they want to show it to them. So this project is too overpriced, eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars for something with plexiglass and a new door.
Ms. Grammerosa? Do they not have a back door there?
I think, I think they do have a back door.
They have back door and a kitchenette. There's a kitchenette that goes out the back door right next to the.
Yeah.
So employees can come in and out of the back door? So they could just close it up with.
I don't know that they can close off completely. I'd have to check with the fire code to see if you can just.
Isn't that how Joey's office is? Isn't the treasurer's office that way, where there's not a?
There's two doors. There's a door going outside.
There's a door from the hallway, and a door going outside in the treasurer's office.
There's two doors. But I, I don't know if you could put the wall across there and block that off completely.
And then how about the auditor's office? Isn't there only like one door going into the auditor's office?
Is this cost comparable with what you've done other offices?
Yes, it was pretty much, it's a replica of what we've done in the other, other offices.
The the issue what drives the cost up here is cutting the counter.
Yes.
And making it a three-foot wide. That, I think, this is my understanding of it, drastically increases the cost of this project.
I think a lot of the cost is the glass.
Mr. Novak?
What if we did a?
The reason why there's a difference here is because the council had no choice. When the money was first given away, people were building what they wanted built, and the council had no vote on it because that was the money that was out there. Nobody's come to us, look, after that point, asked for this kind of money. We didn't have the authority to vote for it, and that's why a lot of stuff was put in when it was. It was a free-for-all. But now, now this council has a decision to make.
Is there a possibility you can hinge the existing counter, put another, trying to stop the traffic?
What hap?
And then put plexiglass up on the counter?
I'm not gonna say it can't happen. What happens is there's a glass window right there. It would have, we would have to do something creative to make that work.
To put a, put a.
Yeah. Because of the glass wall that's there. You got a, you got a glass window wall that's right there. So one of the things we're.
Well, you build a two-by-four frame that the counter would rest on inside the window. And we're talking nineteen thousand dollars. This is a pretty small office, and I can't support this. I mean, plexiglass is fine if they, if they're worried about COVID-type stuff. It's not like we have a lot of glass in these other offices as I go around. I see a whole lot of plexiglass.
I think they're, I think they're worried about security. They had a couple of security scares.
What happened in the Hyatt Building is pretty much every department went to the glass and aluminum frame with the, with the doors on it in that, in that building. So what they did is they tried, they asked to be mimic of what all the other departments had in it. So that's what we did, went forward with.
Is there a lot of money changing hands in the surveyor's office?
That I.
Like we have in the clerk and the treasurer and some of these other offices. I mean, they're handling money every day, correct?
I can't answer that.
Motion to table for further information.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, LaPorte County Adult Probation, requesting permission to spend for probation user fees for furniture for Superior Four, an amount of ninety-six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, and three new printers not to exceed six hundred dollars.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice bow.
Thank you. Oh, there you're talking about that one.
Yeah, these monies are being requested, the ninety-six hundred for Superior Court Four, a variety of different furniture that they need in light of their, their new location. And then the six hundred dollars is for three printers for probation. We have three that have gone out. One is my secretary here in LaPorte, and she's producing a lot of documents, now having to run things to other people or through the copier or things like that.
Motion to approve to allow them to spend their own money?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mrs. Grammerosa.
Question.
Mr. Yagowski.
So this Superior Court throws in Michigan City, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't understand why the council does not, does not ask the same questions. We have not received any money from the courts for the Michigan City courthouse, but yet they're taking the money that we were supposed to get to put in the furniture. That was not part of the deal. We built this courthouse. So everybody else has new furniture. Superior Court has to have new furniture. And this is not the only court that's done it. We still have not seen any money from the courts, and I can't vote for this time until we, until we get our money that helps pay for this courthouse.
Ms. Yagowski, just so, just so you know, that Judge Friedman and and Mr. Iraik have both extended out to, to the council and to come up with a, something that they need, an item that they, that we need to spend it for. They can't just transfer their money into our account or into the general fund. They need an item, and we've had this conversation, and I personally am not coming up with the item by myself. So they need to collectively.
I disagree with you, Mr. Novak. This was brought up in front of the courts. When everybody wanted a courthouse, they were all cooperative. Nobody sat down, not you. They haven't sat and talked about it. This furniture's not due either way. Let's, let's hold it off for a month. Let's, let's get our money, it's due us, the county, the county taxpayers, to help build this courthouse.
So as I stated, recently, in the last two months, the judges and Mr. Iraik have reached out because we've raised this concern, that we need to see something, and they've, they've extended that, hey, we need, we need something that you want us to pay for. We need a, we need an invoice. We need something so that they can pay.
I don't disagree. We have a twenty-three million dollar invoice. I don't disagree. The people that are involved in it know who they are.
But the attorney says no. The attorney says no. Ms. Yagowski? Ms. Yagowski, the attorney said you can't just do that.
Well, this is their money. They're, they're here before, as a courtesy, permission to spend. You can't, you can't really stop.
I don't think we can.
It's another issue.
Right.
He can vote any way he wants.
Right. He can vote any way he wants. Right.
I can't vote any way.
Right. All right.
Again, why, why do we still allow and keep talking about it when it's been, it's been almost a year that we've talked about the participation, wanting money? It was actually three years ago when they actually said they would give us money, and that's how they got to yes vote.
So.
What's that?
I'm not willing to accept it. Go ahead.
They can, they cannot just, they cannot just give us money on a project that's already been bonded.
I can tell everybody, Randy, who are the participants? Mrs. Winsky, are you still there?
No.
I can't see the audience.
No.
No.
Send letters to Mrs. Winsky. She's a part of the project coordinator. The person that's walked up there before, Larry Levendowski, send to Larry Levendowski. You want me to keep naming names? I'll name names. This has been going on for three years, three years.
You missed, you missed my point completely.
I am not.
They've asked.
Can the people start sending bills to them and show them exactly what they want?
Ms. Yagowski, let me finish what I'm saying. They have asked for two months now to a list of, they want an invoice or something. If we can give an invoice that just says towards the project and the attorney agrees with it, then by God, that's what we'll do.
Then by God, let's do it instead of voting. Like, let's get it done like we said three months ago. Let's do it.
That's easy for you to sit back and say that, Mr. Yagowski. I appreciate that.
Okay, let me do what I can do, Mr. Novak. I'll volunteer to be on your committee.
Mr. Cunningham has a comment. Mr. Cunningham has a comment.
I think I just heard Mr. Yagowski say he volunteered.
Then by God, then do it.
By God, I put my name down there. You have to.
All right. We've had this conversation, Mark.
Sir, I have received one amount of money. It's not the first time I brought it up.
And I told you what they are requesting.
And I talked to the people. Mrs. Winsky said this is a bill.
Mr. Cunningham is talking.
Now, if you put me on a committee, I will make sure that bill's sent.
Mr. Cunningham is talking.
Well, you got to turn your mic on.
Mr. Yagowski, I apologize. Some of the confusion I know is because there's a time delay a little bit between what we hear and what you hear.
Right.
And sometimes you're talking over each other. So that's just part of the, I think Garland would agree, that there's, sometimes there's a lag in there. So he doesn't know that you're talking at the same time. So.
But. But.
I was not offended, and I understand, um, Mr. Yagowski's point, and he has now stepped up and volunteered to see if we can get this resolved immediately.
And I'll work with him, and we'll come up with an invoice, some type of way to do it. And if we can invoice him just on the project itself, is a con.
Since you two have volunteered and I'm on the finance committee, I'll be more than happy to do the same.
You know, I, I was talking to Joey about this a while ago. She said, there has to be an invoice. You can't just get the county.
I know. I, 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 we'll get, I know.
Yeah.
That, we've had that conversation.
We'll type up an invoice.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is, uh, human resources. She had to leave?
Yeah.
Additional appropriation from Riverboat or ARP for replace damaged pedestal with labor.
Motion to approve out of River.
Do you know what that is?
Yeah, there was, there's a whole, there was a whole description.
Okay. All right. Just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
All right.
Otherwise I wouldn't have.
All right. Out of Riverboat?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat for three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Molenhour. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. External market salary study nineteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. This is the one we talked about last month.
Mr. President, um, I'd like for you to go to, uh, page two of the Wagner Erwin Shealy proposal. At the bottom of page one, it says principal one hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, senior consultant ninety-five dollars an hour, consultant forty-five dollars an hour. However, on the second page, it says expense reimbursement will be billed using the following rates. Mileage forty-six cents per mile, which is reasonable, per diem twenty-four dollars per day, which is reasonable, lodging per receipts. That means they can stay anywhere in town. Postage and printing per receipts. The timeline for completion is four to five months from the project's start date. It is anticipated the project will start on September first of twenty-two. Well, it looks to me like if we're gonna pay them a fixed rate of nineteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, and then all this other stuff is unlimited over a four or five month period, this is not gonna be a nineteen thousand dollar study.
But what they're, what they're actually requesting is just the principal one hundred and forty-five dollars. It's not.
No, I think that's when the principal comes here, it's a hundred and forty-five dollars per hour. When the.
That's not what it.
Senior consultant comes here, it's ninety-five dollars per hour, and when they send a consultant, it's forty-five dollars per hour. I think that's very clear. The consulting services are billed hourly at the rates listed below.
But on our sheet, it doesn't say an hourly rate. That's what I'm saying. It does, I'm just, yeah.
Okay. If you go to the bottom of page one, last paragraph, these consulting services are billed hourly at the rates listed below, one hundred and forty-five dollars, ninety-five dollars and forty-five. It is estimated that cost will be nineteen thousand six eighty. So we all agree that's gonna be about twenty thousand dollars for hourly rates, correct?
Correct.
Now go to the next page. Expense reimbursement will be as follows. Over a four to five month period, we can be paying them mileage, per diem, lodging, and postage and printing. There's no figure, no estimate on what that could be over.
So, so my, I guess my question would be, when we did the last one, how much over was it then the, I'm surprised they don't just build that into their cost? Well, let's do, let's do a table. We have a motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa to table.
Does everybody understand what I'm saying? It, there's no limit on that last paragraph. Thank you.
Right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
And that goes for number three as well.
That's, yeah, that includes item two and three. Lepore County EMS requests additional appropriation from Riverboat or ARP funds for camera system and fobs for the EMS base and office not to exceed seventy thousand, and digital narcotic locking tracking system not to exceed twenty thousand.
Hi, good evening. So around, uh, October of last year, I began to receive notification from the state EMS commission about a change to the way we are to purchase and handle controlled medications. Um, this was per the, uh, like I said, the state EMS commission. The primary objective of the pharmacy board and the DEA is to eliminate any third party purchasing, um, of these controlled substances. And unfortunately, we do fall into that. We are a third party purchaser of these medications. Excuse me. So prior to even being able to apply for our own DEA licensing and state licensing is what they would like us to do, we need to review and revise all of our policies and procedures regarding the controlled medications. We need to assure all of our layers of security are in place. And we need to assure we have a training program in place which addresses the handling and administration of all controlled medications. Then we can start the process first with the state board of pharmacy, then again with the DEA. We have to get licensing from both agencies. So over the last several months, we've reviewed our current program. We already have a lot of the policies and procedures in place, and we feel comfortable with most of them. We did, however, find two areas that we're kind of concerned about that we'd like to improve upon prior to the application process and prior to the onsite inspection that we have to go through. So the first is an upgraded locking system for medication, uh, medications on our ambulances. So the, the new locking system is digitally tracked. Every, every time you fob or swipe into it, it digitally tracks you. So we can pull that up anytime we want. We can pull it up for investigative reasons or just to do an audit on it. Um, the quote we received to upgrade the current locks we have came in at eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. So since we're retrofitting locks, we don't know if there's gonna be additional parts and pieces needed. So I'm asking for a not to exceed amount of twenty thousand dollars. So the second area that we're kind of concerned about is, uh, the need for a camera system, which, uh, in my opinion, is, is long overdue with this day and age and some of the issues we've had at our bases. Um, so this is another layer of security on top of the locking system. The cameras will be pointed at our ambulance bases and, and have viewpoints of the entrances and anywhere there's a EMS vehicle parked. So it's any, any way that would enter our EMS vehicles as they're parked, uh, at the bases, outside, inside, um, anybody enters or exits our, our buildings. So we have experienced, uh, previously experienced theft from our vehicles and actually vehicle theft and even forced entry into our buildings, uh, previously. So through, um, Darlene's assistance and courthouse security, um, I was able to get a quote for just under, uh, seventy thousand dollars. So we're asking for a not to exceed amount of seventy thousand dollars. So I do feel that, uh, the addition of these two items, um, would improve our layers of security, help us be successful with our application process, and also with the onsite inspection that we have to pass.
And how many buildings is this for?
It'd be for. It would take into account Wanton tall base, Lepore base, Michigan City, the fair building, because we do have quite a few items out there too.
And the new base?
And the new Ron Perry base also.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Graham Rosa to approve. We're doing both of them.
Yes.
Yep.
Out of, uh, Riverboat or out of ARP?
Which one?
I know that we're getting thin on ARP.
So Riverboat.
Am I correct?
Yep.
Riverboat.
Which one has more money? I could be misled, so.
Riverboat has more money than.
So then.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Motion.
Oh wait, uh, quick question.
By Mrs. Graham Rosa, and you second?
No, I thought it was.
All right. On the question?
I'm gonna have to pass. I'll speak to you if I.
Comment? Microphone.
Thank you. The camera system with fobs, is that similar to what we had at Hyler Building when we had somebody enter after the hours that you could see pretty clearly?
Uh, I'd have to defer to Darlene about the specifics on the camera system.
So originally, we were looking at just individual camera systems. Um, we have discovered, you know, uh, probably a cost savings that we're gonna hook them up through security. So yes, it would be the very similar system as what they had.
The reason I ask that question is because the comparison of our camera in the Hyler Building to the police cameras in this recent incident where saved the police department, because their police activated cameras, those pictures were so clear, there was no doubt in anybody's mind. Are we moving closer to the second?
We are. And the, the cameras in the Hyler Building have been, you know, replaced as we have spare cameras. So we get a higher definition one.
That's, that was my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Figured out my question. Uh, who's going to be monitoring these cameras or the views?
I'll have access to them. Also Vern and security will have access to them, and, um, they're beyond Darlene's system.
Recorded loop?
Yep. A look back of, of at least thirty days. And actually, when we, when we looked into it, actually, it was about thirty to fifty day look back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
So as soon as we identify a problem, then we.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to have a certain look back period. So if we do have an issue, and we might not realize it's an issue for a week or so, and then we need that time to.
I didn't know if we were adding another, another screen in E nine-one-one.
Oh, no.
And I just wanna make sure where, where we're trying to monitor twenty-four seven.
I wouldn't burden nine-one-one with it, but, uh, definitely security would have access to our cameras.
Thank you.
Myself and Darlene.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is the commissioners request an additional part-time money of seventy-nine-hundred and four dollars. This is for the, uh, veteran service officer in Michigan City to work Mondays in addition to Thursdays and Fridays. Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions or comments?
So this was not only a raise, it was a raise to fifteen dollars an hour, and it was additional time.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we're clear.
Right.
But we had already given the fifteen dollar raise. That was already done.
But they did not put that in his, in the budget at the commissioner's.
Oh, okay.
So that's why.
Combined.
They did not, yeah, their part-time was never increased to that, so.
Yeah, it's optional to go from fifteen, thirteen to fifteen, and now they're increasing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lepore County Auditor requested additional appropriation from General ARP for compensation. Pay for two employees in an amount of twenty-six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and eleven cents. This is for additional outside of normal work hour work that they need to do because they do not have an overtime account, correct?
Motion to approve out of General.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa out of General Fund. Any questions or comments?
The previous one you approved, what'd you approve it out of?
General.
General. General, thank you.
Was this in, um?
It was overtime.
Yeah, overtime, but was it because of the?
They had nothing to do with this.
Nothing with that.
This was before. He came to the.
Okay.
He came to the finance committee because there was.
Bonus checks.
Bonus, the bonus checks and everything. Mandated it had to be done by a certain date. It caused a lot of extra hours put on, on. They had to work weekends and their holidays.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Also, the one for, um, the commissioners, Diana was saying today, it was actually supposed to be a day tonight to talk about it. Or it could have been a whole lot lower. She'd done it for the whole entire year instead of just portion of what's needed left of the monies. So it's not gonna be the full seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars.
So it'd be less than that?
Yes.
That they actually need? Uh, all right.
So then how do we know what the amount is gonna be?
Somebody's supposed to be in there, and I can explain that. I can get it from her tomorrow and, and call everybody, let them know what the exact amount.
Tell them just don't spend what they don't need to spend. We only approved what.
Up to.
Right.
Gotcha.
So we, we approved the extra day and the. All right. So we're back to the auditor. Twenty-six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars out of General Fund. Is that what it was said? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Lepore County E nine-one-one, request additional appropriation from E nine-one-one, surcharge, uh, count twelve twenty-two for total response in an amount of one hundred and four thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. And caliber, which is the nine-one-one system.
Motion to approve.
Seventy-nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars. Uh, motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Barb was disappointed because she didn't get to talk.
Next item, request an additional appropriation from General Fund or ARP of Riverboat for the Health Department, COVID Vaccine Clinic and COVID testing in amount of sixty thousand. This is going, um, the state is here until the end of June. So they're keeping, this is to keep the, both clinics in Michigan City and in Lepore going until June, close to June thirtieth, so.
Motion to approve.
Out of what?
Out of Riverboat.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat.
Second.
Second by Mr. Molenhour. Is there any?
Question.
Question? Yes.
Yeah. Is this, are these duplications or, um, is there anybody going anywhere right now for testing that? Is it, is it doing by quite a bit of numbers? Are they going, are they going somewhere else now for this type of, uh?
The numbers, the, the, I know the vaccine, I mean, the people that are testing positive has ticked up. Uh, that number has gone back up, but they, um, I, I don't know. They, they're keeping it down. They've reduced the hours. The, the vaccine testing in Michigan City has only opened four days a week, so they've cut back dramatically. And the test, the, uh, vaccines in Mich, in Lepore are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday only. They cut off the Saturdays. Oh, oh, I thought you, I was looking for you. You were gone. Nevermind. Here comes Amanda, so. Hang on a second.
So our, the testing site in Michigan City at the old Eighth Street is open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We've cut back hours, and we've cut back on the people there. We only have three employees at this time. Um, at the vaccine site, at the Heritage Place, we've cut back, we cut out Saturdays. We're operating Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We've cut back drastically on the number of employees, but we are still have seen an uptick. And we're still having first timers coming in. Um, second dose, first booster, second booster, third full. I mean, at this point, some people have got, been able to get five immunizations, but we are seeing anywhere from eighty to a hundred people coming in a day at the vaccine clinic. But the state is starting to demobilize COVID operations in support, which is at this time's going to be done by June thirtieth.
And we do anticipate another payment from the state.
Yes.
Mrs. Graham Rosa.
I just wanna know what happened. Are we completely out of COVID money? You know, that the first, um?
That all went back in the general fund.
So do you know if we've relinquished all that money?
I mean, by, by, by statute, it, it, it went back to the general fund, so, um.
So you don't account for it in a separate, once it went into the, we're not accounting for it?
It's usable for any general purpose.
But we know how much was collected.
I mean.
And we know how much we're spending on this.
Right. I mean, traditionally, the council was, was taking the money back from the general fund since it went, since it went back to the general fund and flowing it through the CARES Act account. But, I mean, realistically, you can take the money from any, from any lawful.
Mike, are you okay to switch it out of the general?
I didn't do anything.
What's that?
County, county side.
Oh, county.
You okay if it comes out of the general then?
Yes, because if that's where we put the COVID money.
If that's where it is, then we should match it.
Yeah.
And the clinic in Michigan City is open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays.
Correct.
I think you said, you threw a Friday in there when you said that earlier.
Did I?
I had heard Friday.
Yes.
So it's on me.
But Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
We'll play it back if we need to.
Another question. And where is Heritage?
Is anybody else in the Eighth Street facility besides Health Department?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think they're the last ones.
They were the last ones there.
IT and early voting.
Thank you. Early voting won't be there much longer.
No.
No.
Any other questions or comments?
Keep in mind, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. President, that to the degree that that's general fund money, it's fungible. I mean, you, you, you know, with the generals getting kind of low and, and you're free to spend that money and very well essentially may have on other things. So, I mean, you could spend it on a general, general's getting increasingly tight. You almost should look at that money as, in one sense, as gone. Uh, and you can take the money from any lawful source. And I, I don't know if you, you know, still have this, 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 it's a departmental activity, the CARES Act fund, that, that you wanna keep track of. In the end, did we end up spending the whole amount that we got from that original COVID money on this type of thing? And that's why we're keeping track of this? Because you wanna know, oh, well, we had extra in the end, or, um, is that, if, okay.
Yes, I, I'd like to know exactly how much we have in there right now. How much we've used. I mean.
We got enough to cover this.
But you're not referring to the original three point six million. You're, you're talking about the money that we've been reimbursed since we've been giving out shots.
Right.
Right.
I just wanna be sure.
It was a three hundred and some thousand dollar check.
Our first payment was three hundred and three thousand dollars. And state, I mean, they've been saying since the first of the year, your next check is coming, your next check is coming.
We believe that'll be our last check, right?
No.
Oh, there'll be another one after that?
Yeah, because they're continually.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they're continually, um.
Bring more.
Submitting.
The insurance.
Submitting claims to insurance, so some of them, it takes time to double check to make sure they actually have insurance or not.
All right.
And I think it's a good idea that we, we keep account of it so that the general public realizes that we are getting reimbursed for this, and they don't think that we're just, we're running this clinic. You know, we're, we're going into the business of running a clinic now, so.
Right. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. LaPorte County engineer requesting to spend out of MVH restricted for on-call agreement for community crossings project in the amount of $30,000.
Good evening, members of the council. Yes, Jerry Sullivan, county engineer. I'm here to ask for the, um, inspection fees for the services provided for the community crossings grant. That's 30,000, not to exceed $30,000 for those inspection fees.
Just out of curiosity, Jay, why wasn't that included in when we just spent that money? We just appropriated a million dollars for that.
The, the million dollars, it's, uh, part of a grant, and the Indiana is very particular on how.
They want them separate?
Yes, yes, be separate, yes. We're very particular on how that's presented to them for payment.
Right, it's out of the MVH, so.
So why do we need an on-call agreement, or what does the on-call mean for us, or is it just, you said for on-call, for inspection?
It's, this is only for inspection services, that's correct.
But they're not on-call, you're not calling them out in the middle of the night?
No, 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 no.
That's where I.
I'm like.
We're looking at number one right now on community crossing project for 30,000.
On-call agreement. For community crossings project. I mean, the way it's kind of worded, it sounds like somebody's sitting by a phone, got a pager, and they're waiting for you to page them out in the middle of the night to.
No, the gentleman is on-site.
Check some asphalt.
Uh, they're, they're checking the asphalt as they put it down, as they mill it.
Right, I get it, okay.
Just, just making sure we understand.
All right.
No, it's not on-call, he's there.
What's your pleasure on number one?
Motion to approve not to exceed 30,000.
All right. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Second. Second by Mr. Molenhour. Any other questions or comments on number one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next, request to spend for major bridge for on-call agreement for LaPorte, uh, for Franklin Street Bridge in the amount of 50,000. Now, who's on-call on Franklin Street Bridge?
This is USI that is wanting to perform the LIDAR work for, uh, investigating. I don't know if you're familiar with LIDAR, but LIDAR is a very accurate survey system, gives you 3D analysis of the area, and, uh, they're looking to, uh, possibly reroute some of the roads and different things in the event that they're going to put a different bridge in, a new bridge.
But why does it say on-call agreement? Is that, is that, should we take on-call off of that?
It, it is on-call, it's specific for the LIDAR only, and it will not be used for anything else. I don't know why the on-calls, well, I guess I can tell you, maybe the, what the reason for the on-call is because the commissioner did approve an on-call agreement for, I believe, $150,000 through USI, but this is not through the on-call agreement. This is actually through major bridge. I don't know why, other than that, I don't know why that would be on there.
So, I, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. On the, on the bridge, they're going to do some sort of 3D analysis, but isn't that only we need something?
Mr. President, let me help him out.
Mr. Yagelski, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was waiting to make the presentation. So, uh, along with what was being studied for the Franklin Street Bridge, we had the initial part where they were going to either, either build a new bridge, so on and so forth, there has been engineer study, looking at the idea that you come in over here on, just to sign the creek, go up through that, um, uh, Dunes area, and come out that way. So it was looking at possibility of if we have to eliminate the bridge altogether, so that the, the, this, this group here is able to do a surveyor's map, so that as long as we're applying for the grants, we include that grant into, to, to, that we take all possibilities of either A, eliminating the bridge, or B, fixing the bridge, or C, building a new bridge. Does that make sense?
So it's all part, it's all, it's all things that are needed for applying for the grants and.
Yes, yes.
Moving and getting some answers on the Franklin Street Bridge.
But they also can use the money for other, for developments like that, doesn't have to be that specific area, but it could be anything, they're able to do a, a overlay and, and do a typ, typography of the area and land, so we can use that to, anything, whether it's bridges or whether, so the companies are able to do that. And that's why it's, it's just, it's just, it's a, it's the ability to do without having to go through a major contract to, uh, for a big large project, just a small project.
So is that a motion?
Yes, a motion for 50,000 of the, uh, in the Dunes fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum out of the MVH fund. Any other questions or comments?
That would be out of major bridge.
Oh, major bridge, I'm sorry.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, it says major bridge. You're right, you're right, you're right. Thank you, Jay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Good evening.
Not to exceed, uh, uh, council comments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagelski.
Um, I just got, that was a person called, sorry, uh, Mrs. Wiskey Cox here, we can talk about that. Anyway, uh, she will get, uh, with Steve tomorrow and, uh, find out exactly what the bill has to say. She will get it submitted. The bottom is that they have not submitted all of their bills as of right now, but she has enough bills submitted to submit to the attorneys or, or, sorry, the judges, or the, um, the prosecutor, or the health department, the different groups at times to pay money. So she says she'll work with you, I, and, uh, and, um, Mr. Cunningham.
Right.
The second part is the MS4 director, I think that we have sent a directive to commissioners that need, that needs to be investigated.
Sounds good, I agree.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other council comment?
Just want, I was just going to say, we just want to remind the voters that, uh, election day is next Tuesday, week from tomorrow, May 3rd, and, um, of course, you can still do the early voting at, uh, the courthouse here in the, uh, 8th Street Building in Michigan City, and of course, out on, um, Johnson Road 400 North, the old library, and down